I didn't have any one sign in for public comments. Do we want to start Pam with the Henrys? The Henrys are here. Would like to present your information now, that would be fine.
Copy of the PG plan and three copies of the nonbuilding declaration. This is a plan I'm sure you've seen from the county planning office. Laren wanted me to go in and do replacement testing for the existing house. And Mr. Peachy needed to install the sewage disposal system. What I have is the request for clearing away from nonbuilding declaration. Has been signed by Laren as the SEO, Chris Shure as Southern County Planning, and I need the signature of the great township board supervisor.
This is the one down 192.
Yes.
Does it state on the properties that they?
Do you want me to do that so I don't know better than that?
Does it state on the parcels which may not be subdivided, which may not be built upon?
They all can be built upon.
Pardon me?
They all can be built upon.
What this says here is no facility or building will be erected on subdivided lots now or in the future that will result in the generation of sewage requiring a permit. That's what this says.
That is for track 1R and that's why Laren went in and did replacement testing, had Mr. Peachy install, no further subdivision. If any parcels are re-subdivided, then you need to have DEP sewage planning approval.
And this pertains to lot 1, correct?
Track 1R. That's where the existing house is.
And what you're saying here is that this cannot be subdivided with that?
Additional testing would need to be completed, soil perks by the SEO.
Okay, so this is only lot 1R.
That is for track 1R and that is correct.
I'm just coming into this, but I agree with your reading though.
Wait, I don't know where this is going, you know, if it went through planning commission or what.
Yes, Chris has reviewed the plan. He has reviewed the nonbuilding declaration and it's signed in.
It just says, "I, Lois J. and Naomi R. Peachy," and then it refers to them as subdivider, "proposes subdivision of one lot, et cetera." And it says, "No facility or building will be erected on the subdivided lots." I have to believe that that's... These, I mean, it says the Peachys are the subdividers and they're proposing a subdivision.
Is it not, what you're saying, is it unclear that it's identifying just this part?
It specifically says track 1R and number 2.
Was this for repair?
Right.
Pardon me?
Was this for a repair?
Yes. Yes, the repair for the existing.
You're not creating it new, you're just repairing an old system.
We're not creating any new sewage producing structures. If a new sewage producing structure is placed on track 1R, then additional soil and perks need to be completed by the SEO.
If I understand it correctly, I would make the motion to accept that.
I have a motion to accept this. Do I have a second? Do you not wait for?
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made, a second is there for Peter?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Now, do all these pages?
Yes, please. I have the original three copies.
We want just...
And I will leave one copy with the township for the...
One signature, yeah.
So one of these is still here?
Correct.
Is this their copy?
No, that's my copy.
Then I suppose we'd like a fact.
Thank you.
So one of these is for us?
Yes. One that does not say original. PEP likes the original signatures.
I just did that backwards. Is that a good keep this one?
Yes. Would you please date it?
Yeah, I'm going to date it on here.
They're very particular.
Today is the soil. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, you have Jody grow. Jody, would you like to?
Hi.
Hi, Jody.
How are you guys? I'm here from Penn Valley Little League softball. Just wanted to come and ask about the little field. We're growing, we're growing, so I have tried to get a couple of companies to come in to tell me what it would take, what all involved. We're going to foot the bill or whatever, we're not asking you guys to do that. I just need the permission. I thought when I came tonight, I would know exactly what was going to happen, like what exactly the companies were going to do, but they're not responding as quickly as we had hoped. So it's just about the little field getting it in working condition, which would mean now that it's completely grassed over, from what I understand, they would have to bring in like a backup, not a backup, but like a skid, something to skim off and the roots go so low. And so we're not really sure what we're looking at, but it's coming here and getting permission or finding out what I need to do to know what we can do to get, if we have the go-ahead once these guys get back to us, or what needs to happen for us to get this little field in working condition. And also, we have a chance to get a set of bleachers. And so I needed to know what the process or what I need to do if we have permission to bring in a set of bleachers. And that's not it. The Reiversburg Fire Hall, where the old baseball field is, they have two bleacher sets there. They need some work, but I've asked people who know something about woodworking to go take a look to see if they're even salvageable. If they're not, we would like to try and get at least a set in there if we're going to redo the field and, you know what I mean, be able to have somewhere for somebody to set. So that's, I thought I'd have more information to present tonight, but unfortunately, people just aren't responding back in a quick line. And we've been working on this for a month, so.
I would have no problem. I would say just keep us in the loop as a group through the secretary, if you would. I mean, as you progress, that's my thoughts.
Yeah. Yeah, just, I mean, you know, if they can lay it out as to what's going to take, so I can let you guys know what equipment is coming in.
Present to us what you're going to do.
Yes, yes, which I had hoped to have tonight in an outline. But I guess my other thing too is if we have a chance to get the bleachers in, is there anywhere on the property that we can't, or do we have any?
What's your intention or where would you like to put them?
Well, because we don't have a, I'm not really sure yet because we don't have a fence, you know what I mean, around that.
The new field that you?
The little one, the little, yeah, that, yeah, down there. I haven't had anybody come in and look, you know, what the best place to place them is because there is no fence, so balls will be flying out this way. Not that they hit that, you know what I mean, that hard, but... So it's just a matter of figuring out the right placement, but I did not know if there was any guidelines as to where we could and could. And again, once I figured that out, obviously, I would let you know.
Why don't you just make us a rough draft?
Okay.
When that day comes.
Okay.
And give it to Pam.
Give them that information.
Yeah. Again, I apologize, I expected to have everything tonight, but.
I don't feel we should, I don't feel we should hold on.
I think we could make a conditional approval.
Certainly.
And we would work out the details once you get a plan. Yeah. I'd make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Give it a conditional approval.
Have a motion and second, those in favor?
Aye, thank you. Thank you. And then I just wanted to let you know too, we have a major bee situation down there and we called early again, so it's really bad. They've had to come out twice now.
Is it around the existing, like the?
It's actually in our shed and the concession stand. So they were out and thought that they'd be gone in 24, 48 hours and they were not. They had to come back again yesterday, so I just wanted to let you know, we paid for that, we took care of that because they're way out of control. He said the bees are just really bad this year, so... But I just want to let you know that. I mean, I had him look at that tubing around the dugouts and that kind of thing, but so far, nothing in there. It just seems to be the concession stand and the shed, so. Yes, which we moved from there into the concession stand. And now they're in the concession stand, so... But they're not as bad as they are in the shed, but we took care of that, so they're still coming out, but I'm hoping the second round is taken care of now, so.
Yeah, I have one question before you go. Will you be driving the field until the grass stops growing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was just recently drug.
Yes, it was, yeah. We, they had went down, it was on July 25th, actually. And in a week's time, we couldn't believe what happened, so. They had sprayed, they tried to dig up as much as they could with shovels and they did spray around, which really helped, and then they did drag the other week, so... Yeah, we continually, but we're in the process of getting our own tractor. So somebody has to come and bring, but we're getting a tractor now, so nobody has to bring... So any of the coaches or anything could just go down, you know what I mean, and drag and keep up with it. But yeah, our first games, we start right after Labor Day, so... And we take grand fair off, so we only have a few weeks and stuff, but... But yeah, they drag, we'll go be dragging and stuff.
I would say don't stop your work, just keep handling the loop what you're doing.
Okay.
Probably she can relay to us.
Okay.
There's no point in holding you out.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
You're welcome. Solicitor's report. David? Emergency management coordinator? I think Jim.
He did take, do a webinar with, was Penn Power, about power and all things.
Oh, okay. Great Township company, you know, and...
I have.
Do you have something?
They did send it to me. They had 16 calls, 13 for Greg Township. The carnival was very successful, a big thank you to all of their supporters. Hoagies, the hoagie sale for Matty King was approved and they will be starting, I will have papers here by Monday morning, so we can start getting the orders and they will be made and delivered on the 16th of next month.
September 16?
Yes.
What night are they making them?
That same night, the 16th.
16th of?
Yeah.
Oh, next month?
Yep.
Do they have a time?
He would let me know, he didn't give me a time yet. And as always, thanks for everything the supervisors do for them.
Good, good. Glad the carnival was a success, they needed that income.
I did, I did ask them about the audit.
The fireman's relief audit?
Yes. He said hopefully finishing up soon. They're going to do a site visit to look over equipment and go over anything. He didn't send them the first time, he will keep us posted with a date.
Okay, he doesn't, that hasn't been established?
No, he had, he said he has pneumonia.
Anything from the advisory board?
Oh, no. Well, I might as well do the advisory board and the physical plant manager at the same time. Yeah. I just wanted to point out that October 7th is the day of caring, where we get volunteers and the past...
That's United Way.
What's that?
The United Way.
United Way, yeah. In the past three years or maybe even more, we would sign up for it and Lloyd Rhodes would come over and say, "How much paint do you need? And how many rollers and how many brushes and all that?" We'd tell him and he'd give us a voucher and I'd go pick them up. But nobody showed up to help on the day of caring and that happened at least two times. And we used to have people that made lunch and they, one of the times they actually made lunch and there was nobody eating. So I have been saying lately that we're not participating. But anyway, Warren Smith is a new person who's organizing and she called me and I told her the story and she said, "We'll make, we'll make absolutely sure you have some people there."
The volunteers that she has, she can designate to come here?
Yes.
And what, what would they be doing here?
Painting a fence, trimming bushes.
Oh, okay.
And anything else we might think of, it's a reasonable thing for them to do. Even sweeping up the grounds, you know, a little bit or something like that. So anyway, we've got a closet full of paint. So most of it was green, so we could certainly paint the fence anyway.
Sure. Okay, so she's going to work with you on this?
Well, yeah, and I want to talk to Pam and collect ideas from anybody that thinks they know what...
We can get on that on Monday.
Yeah.
Good, okay. And then your physical plant report.
I just want to say that I'm still taking data on the second floor air conditioning and it's getting tuned up and it's starting to work pretty good, but SC barely wanted some data on the extra hot days ran, so.
And they've been pretty good numbers, getting good numbers within reason?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Operations managers report.
No.
No?
Who's the operations manager?
Pam. And the... Jack of all trades, master of none. This, next is the Penn Valley Code Enforcement Agency and...
You all have a report?
We have a report from that. Criminal questions that you have to do. Greg Township, we have issued 38 permits to date. Agency-wide, we have issued 210 building permits.
You know, some jobs, if you're doing well...
Stop.
That means, you're doing a good job if no one knows you're doing it. And other jobs, you're doing a bad job if no one knows you're doing it. I can't decide which category.
Thanks, David.
Sure.
You may feel better today.
But...
No, I was saying, some, some jobs you're doing well if no one knows you're doing it.
You're the one doing it.
Right. And others are the other, and I can't decide what the operations manager. I'm kidding.
I like what they're doing.
So we have that information here?
You're going to be grounded from that table.
Charles, anything from the EMS?
They're still doing pretty well. We had both the vehicles in for inspection. Naturally, the older one needed a few things, which is typical, but other than that, they seem to be doing fine so far.
Wonderful. Anything for the plant commission?
No meeting was held.
Okay, no meeting, all right.
What about the Penn Valley Regional Plant?
The regional plant, yes.
Okay, they will meet again on September the 28th. It's a Tuesday, 7:00 AM in this room here.
At what time?
7:00 AM. Yep.
Is that not the group that met out at the ball field at the pavilion?
Well, some of the members.
Back from there?
No.
Okay.
Some of the members were there.
Were there?
Yeah.
I've not heard much on that. Trig municipal park?
I was away at the last meeting. My understanding is they planted over 200 seedlings that were given to them, I think by the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and scouts and students planted others, but beyond that, I don't know. I'll find out more Tuesday.
Anything from water and sewer? Did you send anything Pam to you either?
No.
Then we'll move on to the secretary treasures report. You have the minutes from the July 8th meeting. You have a chance to look over those, review those. I need a motion to accept them as...
I will make that motion. This, the July 8th meeting was a special meeting, right?
No.
No.
The July 28th.
The July 28th.
The July 28th, I mean, it was a special meeting.
Yes, we'll do the July 8th first.
Okay, I see that, all right.
I made that change.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 8th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have the same now for the special meeting that we had on July 28th. That was in regards to the cares money?
I will make a motion to accept that. Who brought up the shingles on the roof?
Charles did.
Okay.
And I did talk with Jim Smith about that and I mentioned to Charles that he said that part of the roof is in really good shape, but he also agrees with Charles that when that needs replaced, steel is the way to go.
Yeah, okay.
I just figured it was a good idea, you know, to set eyes on it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, every time you go up there, you see it.
You see something.
Yeah. Okay, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special meeting minutes of July 28th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now we have in front of us the all funds financial report. And you'll see on the bottom is the very end, last item is the cares money within its own separate account.
Yeah. We don't dump over a million dollars very often.
Don't look at it too closely, because we're not spending that.
On that.
I don't want to spend that.
Any questions there that you see?
No, no.
Alan Keener, a motion to accept the all funds financial report?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to accept the all funds financial report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have anything from the right to know?
No.
Brandon, I know you, fellas have been busy doing a lot of turn chipping.
Yeah, we started that and hopefully next week, the end of this tomorrow and next week we can finish that up. The distributor could not come to shoot the oil for them this week, so we're waiting on them. Had to go make a few amendments to our signs, but it is what it is, we'll get it done eventually. We'll start mowing then, next week hopefully. We started working on some of the pipes on Middle Road, catch, a little bit of catch base somewhere. What I did want to say to you guys was about, I briefly mentioned to you guys about the driveway.
Yes.
Permit, that I am now responsible for issuing driveway permits, which is understandable. That way it's, you know, there's no problems, which I get that.
Right.
But as far as the enforcement of it, I'm a nobody, so I don't really feel like I'm the policing agent for that and I just want you guys to figure out who is.
Yeah, we need to determine how we do that.
Did you make a list, Brandon?
I did.
Do you have a list?
It's at the shop.
That's a question for David. How we can handle that.
Well, I think what he's talking about when we did the...
I'm just saying for the permits in general, I mean, who's the one that enforces?
Brandon issues the...
I issue them and get that, but who is the one to, if somebody is...
Of course, he needs to police that.
Yeah, who's the one, who's the one to police that?
You know, since we don't use our code enforcement agency for that.
Right.
You know, maybe the first thing you do would be a letter from the secretary to the person who's in violation. If nothing happens, I think we should give it to our solicitor.
Doug, instead of throwing that on Pam's lap, why can't we have our code enforcement officer handle that?
Well, it's not part of the contract.
Because they're not issuing the permit?
No.
It's not part of their contract. What, are there issues arising or is it just a concern that someone needs to...
There is sometimes. I mean, if somebody would put a, you know, put a driveway in or pave a driveway without obtaining a permit, who am I to make them do that? I mean, I can, I have no issue going out and saying, you know, "Either needs a pipe, needs a swale, get that," but when they are...
In violation?
Yeah, in violation, I'm not, I'm not a permit enforcer, I guess, if you will.
Could, could we have the agency issue that permit or no?
They did before, but they didn't.
Call after.
No, there's a lot of stuff that was done that shouldn't have been done and...
That, yeah.
Do you all have an ordinance or do you know, I mean, I...
There's a driveway ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something that would work for you if you were with the officer?
Well, we could. I mean, I don't care, I mean, I'm just saying that I'm...
Yeah, when they go out to actually look at it and Laren, pardon me, I'm sorry, Brandon can say, "Well, this is what I expect," and then make sure he follows through so he doesn't have to have all of the work for...
He being the property owner.
Code enforcement officer.
So you're having Brandon go out anyhow?
Correct, in the beginning, but then they can handle it if there's an issue.
If they want to do that or are able to do that.
Well, I'm just trying to alleviate you from, you know, the grief.
Well, what happened before they get the permit, and a lot of times they didn't even look at it.
They didn't go out to...
They proved it, yeah.
To sign off on it.
Yeah, I think this is a much more thorough way to do it here with Brandon.
We need to...
I mean, I'll write a letter for the time that I'm here, I'll write a letter to be filed here.
I'm just saying that there's a lot of people and I would much rather handle it face to face than get a letter sent to me.
I think that in this community, I feel like Brandon can do it face to face or is it one of our responsibilities to go out?
Yeah, I don't know whose responsibility it is and I'm not a power hungry person that needs to go out and be, I have other stuff to do other than being a driveway cop.
Right.
Right, I mean, and that's right in the middle of your day, probably.
I would say that the best thing would be to do that if I went out whenever it was put in or if they were repaving or something, looked at it, looked at it when it was done. If they don't, don't meet the specs, then somebody else, some, somebody that has that in their job is, should be their job.
And I know a lot of things fall back on the supervisors ultimately.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was looking at. The ordinance isn't specific as to who enforces it. Yeah, I mean, I think you all should oversee the process, but if there's a preliminary stuff, I would just, you know, get something Pam's good, but...
I'll go out.
Yeah, I mean, Doug's here, yeah, someone, yeah. I don't think...
I'm not up for election anymore, so I'll go.
You're happy to do it.
Yeah, you're not limited by the ordinance, let's put it that way.
But then what, what happens is that going to be... But then what, what happens, is that gonna be one of the supervisor's responsibilities then for, from here on out? Consistency is what we need.
That's what, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, 'cause it's...
And that's what we have to obtain.
If, if we could, Brandon, you gotta do, right? If we could, Brandon, say you would go out with, for example, Mike the first time, and say, "This is what I expect."
Yeah.
And then there becomes an issue, and you call him?
Then they can handle it from there.
Correct.
That's what I would, that would be what would be ideal for us, I think, like somebody else.
If I can, if I'm allowed, I will talk to Mike personally, myself, and see what he would do.
I mean, I can talk with him too.
Well, then you take your responsibility.
We've been through this already.
Yes, and we've talked and talked about it, and nothing's happened.
Now we need to make a decision, yeah.
That's my decision.
Yeah, I think, I think the township has a much more vested interest in the house rivalries or...
By issuing the permits?
Yes, yes.
Right, and that was part of the problem. I mean, it says they want our slip, which they issued as well, I believe, too, the driveway fifteen-inch pipe. Well, no, no smaller than that. There's numerous ones that are not that, and it's, you know, where you...
Well, there were houses being built, driveways paved, driveways built, and we didn't even know about.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm not driving around all day, every day, looking at that stuff. There's other stuff to do.
No, 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 but well, on my point, I wanna try and get you, so you don't have to deal with that stuff all the time. Like you said, if it becomes an issue, you can turn it over to someone else.
Well, that'd be the best, Dave, because when there's only three people, when you take one person out of the equation, it really puts a clink to all the things that we do.
And I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I think we should try that route.
Okay, I'll talk to you. I mean, I was just thinking, if Mike's not issuing the permit, is he out of it? Does, you know, he may not even wanna be involved.
I mean, well, let him issue a permit with Brandon with.
Like usually, that's how he's gonna make his money.
Right, right.
But let him make that in the beginning, but with Brandon's approval.
So, you're saying letting Mike issue the permit?
Correct, with Brandon involved in the beginning.
Oh, yeah, who gets the permit money for that then?
Mike would.
Right.
The agency would get it.
Which, not that I really want money, but then on the other hand, Pam has to file that paperwork.
Right, he takes his time.
I have to do it, it would take me away too, so...
Right.
It's gonna be a two-edged sword, we gotta do something. I guess we can't have our cake and eat it both.
No, no.
What is the permit fee exactly?
Fifty-five dollars.
So, it's not like...
It's not gonna make us or break us.
No.
That's my opinion.
We just need to establish...
Something, we still...
Well, I'm looking at trying to utilize his time, like he said, in a better way.
Exactly, exactly. So, what you're suggesting...
Correct.
Is that Mike, the zoning officer, goes back to issuing the permits?
With Brandon involved the first time, so he can kind of say, "Yes, this is what I want," or "No, I don't want."
And then, don't you go back and review it at the end, and look at the driveway?
Final inspection to sign it off, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which I don't need to be with him for that, I can drive by anytime, do that, and then if there's an issue...
Point it out.
Call him, or if it's okay, it's done, under the bridge, over, move on.
And you're okay with, I mean, that, to me, would take a lot off of here.
Well, yeah, I would...
Because I can see if he'd have to go out, you're gonna basically end up losing four hours, easily.
Sure, 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 and that's four hours off of the duties.
Right, like he said, you cut the crew from three to two.
Two, right.
So, if you're all right with that, or anybody else, that's my opinion.
What do you think, Doug?
Well, I'll go along with whatever, anything that was to do here. But I just remember the past and how difficult it was, and then when the driveway is put in, and you really have a hard time doing something about it, so...
Well, I'm still involved with it upfront, and, and at the end, so I don't say I don't have to sign off on it if it isn't right.
So, what it amounts to is you will actually do the inspection.
Right, and he would just be the overseer, the enforcing, the enforcing agent.
Well, is the enforcer Christine Stetson's name?
She's the code, yes.
Yeah.
So... I shouldn't say Mike.
Should, should we ask and make sure that she knows? I mean, it's one thing to know about the code, but it's another thing to know about projects.
This is gonna be her task.
Yes, I mean, does, does she have enough knowledge of...
This is a suggestion that we've all came up with together, if it works with them.
Right, correct.
So, either we take it to them, and if they agree with it, we go with it. If they don't, then we'll figure something else.
Figure something else out.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Right.
But I'm just trying to get him to utilize his time in a better way.
More effectively, right.
It's not that big of a deal, I mean, that ain't gonna take much time or anything to talk with her for a little bit.
No, exactly.
Whatever, I can explain my concern, express my concerns with her, I don't care, that's fine. I just, I don't, who am I to go and tell somebody?
It'll just turn into more of a...
I won't be able to get in touch with him until Tuesday.
Well, that's fine, it's not nothing.
So, I will call him on Tuesday. And I'll talk to Mike and Chris.
I'll start somewhere.
And we also talked about putting something on our website regarding communicating on our website about these permits that are issued here. Now, the logging permit, Brandon, would that remain yours?
Yeah, probably, definitely.
That, that's okay, yeah, gotcha.
I, I heard somebody say they, we haven't had news from the township for a long time, maybe we should write that.
Like the grapevine?
I didn't know they could do that.
Yeah, periodically, it used to be quarterly.
We got grapevine.
We'd write a newsletter, and it would take like a half-page or a page of it to tally on, and put it in there. Some people like that.
But we have our website, is the website?
Yep.
Not the website, but the Facebook page.
Oh, yeah, everything's being transferred over, everything's up and going. I mean, I can start adding everything to grapevine as well.
Well, I would think that it's...[1714.62]